All right, good evening. It's 7:00 PM, November 13th, 2025, and I'd like to welcome everyone in the room and those participating online as I call to order this meeting of the Bellbrook Sugar Creek Board of Education for the purpose of conducting the school district's business. We value everyone's input and have made sure to dedicate a portion of this meeting to hear from you. In case you missed it, there's a sign-in sheet up by the front door for anybody wishing to speak tonight, and we look forward to hearing your comments during that time as it's indicated on our agenda. With that, Mr. Gottem, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Anderson?
Here.
Mrs. Dawn?
Here.
Mr. Kinsey?
Present.
Mr. Price?
Here.
Dr. Pryor?
Present.
Five present.
All right, we have a quorum. If you're able, will you please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Anderson, then seconded by Mrs. Dorn. Does anybody have any corrections or questions?
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dawn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Dr. Pryor?
Yes.
Five yeses. My second and last item is approval of monthly financial statements for the month of October 2025. Thirty-three percent of the fiscal year is done, and in revenue-wise, we are over thirty-three percent, which is good. We want to be over, and expenditures are right in line, almost thirty-three percent. So fiscally, we're doing good this year.
Can I get a motion to accept?
Moved.
And a second?
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Dorn, seconded by Dr. Pryor. Anybody have any questions? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Dawn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Dr. Pryor?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Five yeses.
Nothing else, sir?
That's all I have.
Thank you. Does anybody have any correspondence for the board, especially anything we haven't already seen altogether?
I got some feedback on the parent square attendance notifications now. Several people reached out and said that they were super happy about the drop-the-school note right there, because if you're a parent of little ones who keep that in their Eagle folder for three weeks, it's very nice to just drop it there. So I got a lot of good feedback about that.
Anything else? All right, so we don't have any reports to the board tonight, so we'll move into our open communication period. Your thoughts and comments are welcome during this time, and there was a sign-in sheet right there by the door. Now it's right there. When you're given the floor, please share your name, address, and any group affiliation you hold if it's relevant. You'll then have five minutes for your comments, which should be directed toward the presiding officer, who tonight happens to be me. This time is for the board to listen and absorb. As such, traditionally, a dialogue is not created in this moment. In case you're wondering, the reason for these policies, which can be read in their entirety on the district's website, policy number 169.91, is to ensure that as many people as possible have the opportunity to speak and that everyone is treated equally and fairly. So we would like to welcome Greta Schumacher. Good to see you again. Thanks for being here. You have five minutes.
Thanks for having me. Good evening, everyone. My name is Greta Schumacher. I live in the landings here, and I'm a parent of two, one in high school and one in the middle school. And first of all, I wanted to speak today to the board and give them a thank you for the communication, especially Dr. Pryor. He made with me quite a lot, and I really appreciate it, about the parental rights laws or policy, I guess I should say. I appreciate that we, that the board has heard parents and teachers, and that we try to find a compromise. And of course, as a good compromise, it's often that neither side is really happy with everything, but a compromise is a compromise, and I appreciate that you are in, maybe already did, or will vote on it tonight, that you would change, that everyone who doesn't respond, who has a parent who doesn't respond, will be opted in to read the books. And I appreciate it, and to be in the curriculum too. And I appreciate it also that you try to put together a list of the books that were, I don't know, put at the high school instead of BMS, for example, or that are deemed not, not good, or I don't know how to say it, but you know what I mean, that have the red dot on it or whatever it is for the library, for those people who need to opt in. I appreciate that you made the list public, or will make it public as far as I understand, and that parents then can look at that list and see if they, what they think, if they maybe want their students to read it at home, or what they think later on about it. So thank you for that. I do hope for the future that the communication will continue, the cooperation will continue, and I know we got, we got voted in again, so hopefully in the future this way continue that you listen to the community and are willing to meet and even email and speak privately with people too. So thank you for that. Then moving on from the parental rights, which is always going to be an issue, of course, and a topic, but we can, in my opinion, table that for now. I do have something that I noticed when I first moved here, and also recently, now that we changed the time with the sun rising and setting, with beautiful sunrises and settings here in Ohio, which I love, but it's sometimes an issue on Upper Bellbrook Road, because there's only two, I don't know what you call them, like the flashing lights that tell you, please go twenty before the school start. And when I first moved here, I wasn't aware this was something, and there were only two. There's one at the end and one at the beginning, and there's a long stretch where there's no lights. There's some signs that say like, please drive twenty when the lights are flashing, and I remember driving by like for the first time, and I'm like, what light? I don't see the light. So I was wondering if there's something we can do about that. I don't know if that's the right area to bring it up to the school board, if we need to talk to someone else, but maybe get more lights out there that people are actually aware, because sometimes even when I drive, and twenty is very slow as you're, you know, moving along there, I did have people like on my tail probably wondering, why are you going twenty? Because the light is flashing, you might not see it. But that's something I would like to have the school board address or maintenance. I'm not sure who does that. So that's my one issue today. Also here at BMS for the side drop-off, I know it's being used for some of our wheelchair kids, and it's also very dark, and I was just wondering if there's something we could do to add an extra light. So when they arrive in the morning, 7:00 AM, bright and early, everyone's tired, and it's still dark out, if there can be more lights, so that it's safer for drop-off on the side also. And yeah, thank you for hearing me today and looking forward to more cooperation and communication. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. So typically, it's the county, I believe, that's in charge of the flashing lights, but we might be able to send them a note or something. But thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so that's the end of our list, so I will close open communication for tonight, and we'll move into our superintendent's report.
All right, certificated employment, so this is a consent agenda, A, B, and C, certificated, licensed employment, resignation, leave, absence, supplemental duty, and pupil activity, and then support staff, employment, resignation, leave, absence, and then substitute employment.
So moved.
Second.
All right, tonight's consent agenda moved by Mrs. Dorn, seconded by Dr. Pryor.
So again, we have, I'll just give a few of these. So we have some supplementals in here, a couple leave of absences, a transfer of Steve Nuttall, who is going from third shift custodian to high school to the maintenance assistant, so of transferring him to that position, because we had Ray Watts become the new maintenance supervisor, so that opened up his position, and so that's where Steve Nuttall is, and so then that opens up a third shift custodian, which we are now looking into. And then subs as, as normal on here. So those are just a few of those pieces on here.
So, questions or comments? Please call the roll.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Dr. Pryor?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dawn?
Yes.
Five yeses.
Okay, we have student fee revision, so recommend approval to amend motion number 2592 from, from June 12th, 2025, to reflect the following fee changes for the district-wide music department for the 25-26 school year.
So moved. Second.
Mrs. Dorn, then Mrs. Anderson?
So this is for, for winter, so IP and winter guard, and so after taking a look at, as their finances, they proposed some, some changes here to, for some increases, as with everything, inflation and prices increase, so this is for the, the winter, winter guard and indoor percussion.
So this originated from the music department?
From the music department, yep, and Mr. Han also.
Yep. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Dr. Pryor?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dawn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Five yeses.
All right, next, resolution, recommend approval of resolution regarding the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce 2025-2026 Special Education Model Policies and Procedures.
So moved. Second.
Mrs. Anderson, then Mrs. Dorn.
Again, Mrs. Pritchard, Special Ed Director, presented this information at the last meeting, and so this is just approval of the special education model policies and procedures that she presented last, at the last meeting.
Any discussion? Please call the vote.
Dr. Pryor?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dawn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Five yeses.
Mrs. Dorn.
All right, policies. So this is a second read for quite a few policy revisions. This list is, none of the wording, correct, none of the wording has changed in any, but this list is a little bit different than last time. Remember last meeting, I went through that whole list of policies that were being deleted and combined and all of that. So I'm going to, I'm going to read you a list of policies that we are not proposing for second read, we are not putting forward for second read. I'm going to explain why in a second. So policies 1422, 142202, 1662, 3122, 312202, 3362, 4122, 412202, and 4362. Did you get all that? We were advised by our school attorney that our current policy, she felt captured Ohio law better than Niola's new proposed policy. So we may reattack, reattack that at a later date, but she was going to reach out to Niola with some of her concerns, but that was under advisement from our attorneys, so we are not putting those forward for second read tonight. And then policy 8640 was the one, we had a very minor adjustment, allowing students to eat on buses for non-routine trips, and upon second review, the transportation department is not a fan of that policy, and so we are not going to put that one forward as well. If there are extenuating circumstances that require that, they can reach out to transportation and discuss it, but we're not putting that one forward for second read as well. So everything else you see here on the agenda tonight is up for vote this evening. I didn't get any substantial feedback on any of these. I don't know if any of you did, but these are all as you saw them last meeting.
I don't think we have a motion yet, right? Can I get a motion to accept the policies on this list?
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Pryor, and then Mr. Price. Discussion or questions? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dawn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Dr. Pryor?
Yes.
Five yeses.
All right, next, memorandum of understanding with Sugar Creek Education Association, recommend approval of a memorandum of understanding with the Sugar Creek Education Association regarding the addition of a staff mentor effective with the 2025-2026 school year.
So moved. Second.
Mrs. Dorn, then Mrs. Anderson.
Again, just as it says, it added an additional staff mentor for a counselor, and so that's, that's what this is.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Dawn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Dr. Pryor?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Five yeses.
Indoor track participation, recommend approval of the 2026 high school varsity indoor track and field participation activities.
So moved. Second.
Dr. Pryor, then Mrs. Anderson.
Again, this is typical every year of approving this for indoor track participation.
We've done indoor track. Been to those meets.
All right, please call the vote.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Dr. Pryor?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dawn?
Yes.
Five yeses.
All right, donation, recommend acceptance of the following donation with gratitude, $2,000 cash donation from the Bellbrook Lions Club for Eagle Scout Project at Bell Creek Intermediate Playground. Creek Intermediate Playground.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Dorn, then Mrs. Anderson.
So this is to buy some stencils to use on their asphalt over there, since we had resurfaced all of our pavement out there over the summer.
Thank you, Lions Club. I don't know how we can ever thank Lions Club enough.
My understanding, then, once the stencils are owned, they can be reused for future repaving. So the Boy Scout troop or whoever it is will keep retention of the stencils, which is kind of cool. All right, please call the vote with gratitude.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Dr. Pryor?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dawn?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Five yeses.
All right, items of discussion and information. So 2026 calendar, meeting calendar draft. And so if you take a look at the calendar of meeting dates for next year, this follows essentially the same as we are doing this year, with two meetings at the buildings in each of the school years. And you might see that this looks a little odd, that at this point, only Belle Creek Intermediate and Stephen Bell Elementary on there. That's because on the, this is calendar year, we do school years, but this is a calendar year. So within the next calendar year, it will be then the middle school and the high school that will be in the next 26-27 school year.
That's going to be my first question.
Yes, so that's why it's all Belle Creek Intermediate and Stephen Bell, so that we're keeping all four schools, visiting each one of the schools in a school year. And so that everybody doesn't have the same session every time. Like, wouldn't be fair for Belle Creek Intermediate to have the August one every year. And so to mix it up a little bit, a little variety of that.
So Dr. Cozad, I brought it up with you, and I want to float it by the rest of the board members. We added these four extra meetings, I don't know, maybe four years ago-ish, four or five years ago?
Yep.
So that we could, you know, see every building and have some extra time specifically to focus on that building and what is happening there. And over the years, it has just become, we have 16 meetings or 17 meetings a year, and they're kind of, yes, we get a presentation from that building, but it's kind of just an extra meeting. And to me, it turns into just bringing poor Henry out, making all of our principals come to an extra meeting. And we just, however many meetings we have, we will fill them. So my question is, do you think that, like, I personally value being in all the buildings and getting a report from each building. What are your thoughts on, rather than having those four extra meetings a year, specifically the ones in the fall? We go through two meetings in June, a July, and then you go August, August, September, October, October, and that's a lot, especially for our staff that has to support this and their busiest time of year. What would be your thoughts on not having those four extra meetings, knowing that some of our regular meetings might be a little longer, and having those, our normal meetings start at 6:30 instead of 7:00 to accommodate that? And maybe just to keep, so folks aren't here until 10:00?
Having which meetings start at 6:30?
Having all of our meetings start at 6:30, but having four less, not having the four extra meetings a year.
Are those, those are the labeled, the work sessions? Is that?
The regular works, the one that's the second meeting a month?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's the ones that are in color on here.
Yeah.
Yep.
Let me try to understand. You're thinking every meeting should start at 6:30?
Knowing that if we eliminate those four meetings, that some of those meetings are going to have, like, be longer, like, some of our normal meetings, our one meeting a month, would be maybe a little longer. Therefore, rather than keeping people here until super late, we start meetings earlier.
But you're not saying some of the meetings should start at 6:30, you're saying all of our meetings should start at 6:30?
Potentially, or maybe not. To me, starting them all at the same time just lets it be the same every time, and so people aren't confused.
I mean, I'm personally not really in favor of moving up the meeting earlier.
Okay.
That's me.
I think it's important to have those designated work sessions, if there was to be a way to, say, like, from 6:00 to 6:30, or, you know, it's important for the community to see us doing our work, you know? And I think that's, that was a point that they made a couple years ago, is having those work sessions is valuable. What do other boards in the area, do they have work sessions, Dr. Cozad? Do you know?
It's a variety, some have works. So there officially is not a work session, all meetings are regular meetings, even though we have labeled them kind of a work session. It's either a regular meeting or a special meeting. And so it depends, some have work session or regular extra meeting, some have just once a month. So it's a wide variety out there of what people do.
I mean, it seems to me like the meeting where we actually really do work is the reorganization meeting every year, you know, that one? And then the, was it the Saturday meeting? Is that like the 24th?
Those two, I would definitely propose to keep the same. I mean, the alternative would be those four extra meetings, maybe putting more of a focus on trying to keep them just to that building update, which was the purpose of the meeting, and not tacking on a bunch of additional topics. Right. As much as we can.
That's actually a really good idea, I think. That way they get special attention, you know, or, you know, and that's the focus of the meeting, rather than just being, we're showing up there at that school that day, you know? So.
Anybody else? Do you have thoughts?
I don't really have strong thoughts either way, I don't think.
I mean, I like having the meeting, so when people have something to say, they come more often, you know? But I certainly also don't want to, you know, tax our principals and, you know, more than absolutely necessary, because they're all here way, way, way more than eight hours a day. So, but, you know. I'm less busy than you guys, so I can come to the meetings.
Well, maybe we, sorry. As far as the time, I think 7:00 works better, because it allows people to get home, have dinner, and then come out. I think if it's 6:30, that is, you know, it's a little bit more inconvenient for me, but that's probably by all means, it's the least concern. I just think for people, 7:00 seems to work better, I would think, for the, most people, you know, get home, have supper, and then.
Yep. I was thinking more on the back end. If we tend to go long, especially if we were potentially going to take those four meetings worth of information and spread them across the other 12, maybe our meetings would be longer, and we're not, didn't want to keep people here late. If we're not going to do that, then we don't need to start over. So general consensus is keep the four extra meetings, but potentially try to keep them to the special topic of the night and less routine business?
Yeah.
I like that, if that's at all possible.
I think it would be really nice to invite, like, maybe the BLT or a group of teachers and just have a little chat, like we do, that we've tried to do on the Saturday mornings with the, that Saturday morning session, just to invite some of the teachers, just to have a very informal, how's it going, what can we do to help you, kind of chat. I think those would be helpful as well. Something, maybe that's something we bring up at the January meeting, how we want those to structure. Yeah.
It's a good idea.
I didn't quite follow why we weren't showing the other schools, we're just showing like BCI twice and Stephen Bell twice. What was the reason for that?
Sure, so this is the 25-26 school year, so in the 20, so in the fall of '25, we have visited the middle school and the high school. So we want to visit every school in every school year.
Okay.
So then the rest of the school year will be BCI and Stephen Bell.
Okay.
And so starting next year, so that people don't have the same, so schools don't have the same slot, I've switched it around, instead of the middle school and high school going in the first half of the year, they're now in the second half of the year. And BCI's, they're in the second half of the year this year, they will be in the first half of the year next year.
Calendar year versus school year.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
And it feels wonky of like that, but, so in the 2027 meeting dates, it will, you know, the February and April one will be the middle school and the high school. Yep. And then we'll go from there.
All right. Yep, that's good.
So if I'm hearing, the will of the board here is to keep as is for the December vote on this, and then at the January meeting of maybe honing in a little bit on what those second meetings will be. Again, we can definitely, is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that all right with you?
Yeah. It's fine.
All right, any other comments on that topic? All right.
Okay. And then another item of information, the draft job description. So this is a Client Device Administrator and Support Specialist draft. And so this is our technology department. Plan is to shift some folks around, not to add a position, but to just shift people around in some better fits for their job skills. And we'll be doing that, the plan is at the next meeting to have that kind of flushed out.
So it's not an added position?
It's not an added position, it just is.
Just restructuring?
Restructuring a little bit, yep.
Okay.
Yep, it's not an add.
Okay.
And so we'll restructure those at the planning at the next meeting.
Questions about that? All right, last little item for discussion. Building's busy tonight, it's going to be busy the next two nights. Everybody go check out Murder on the 518, a middle school theater production. I know we're looking forward to seeing it. 7:00 Friday, 7:00 Saturday. Go check it out.
Hey, one quick thing, go back here slightly. During, I should have brought up during, we were talking about voting on the fees. Some of those fees are pretty steep. And do we have any knowledge of kids that just can't participate because they don't have that much money? I mean, it's a negative, so you don't know, you know, if it's silence, you just, you just have, you have to wonder if there's some kids like, wow, I'd like to be, like Winter Guard, which is a wonderful thing for kids to be involved in, but that's a lot of money, $950. So do we have any, do we ever have, say, look, sign up, and then we'll talk? Or how's that go?
Again, those things are taken care of by either individuals, or as we, the Lions Club approved 2000, they tend to chip in some money. And so if somebody is in need of something, or there's some fundraising pieces, so a combination of that, if someone is really wanting to do it, we work it out so that they can do it.
Are the kids somehow made aware of that? Because I mean, it's probably not something really obvious to a freshman girl that wants to be in Winter Guard. Mom says, I don't have $950, and it'd be kind of awkward for them to go into the, talk to Mr. Hand and say, hey, can you help me out here? You know, so I don't know. It's just, hopefully the word of mouth is there, you know?
I think the word of mouth is there, and it's a small world, and people will find out and know. They've been able to do it for years.
So there's a history of it being needed and figured out?
Yeah, and a lot of times they reach out to the alumni. So we get an email saying, we have this many students that would like to participate and they don't have the fees. Can the alumni come through? And usually, we're able to donate a lot.
All right, good. All right, that's all.
Before you close, I do have a brief update to provide to all of you on Sugar Creek Elementary. As you know, some of you might know, the board kind of nominated me to join Dr. Cozad and Mr. Gottem to kind of work through that process. So just an update to the board and to the community, where we're at right now, and I know it's taking forever. It seems like it's taking forever. What's happening? We've got about four entities kind of involved, and when some of those entities are public entities, things take a long time to negotiate between four different organizations, right? So where we're currently at is that we are looking, what we think is going to be the best opportunity for our schools, and still deliver a really awesome opportunity for the community, is that we are looking to split the lot down there into two parcels. One parcel will be the one-story building that the ESC currently resides in. They are interested in purchasing that building and a very, very minimal amount of land surrounding it, so that they can keep their operations down there. The remainder, the second part of that lot, the other lot, our intent is to offer that to the city of Bellebrook and the CIC for redevelopment, likely in conjunction with the Lions Club for awesomeness to happen down there in the future. Nothing probably right away, but eventually, over time, priorities that have been thrown out are, obviously, the city wants parking, Lions Club clubhouse that could potentially be utilized during other hours as a senior senate or other sort of meeting space, amphitheaters, splash pad, parking for Sackett, concession stands, and real bathrooms for Sackett. So all things that are in the mix down there. But that's currently the path we are working on, is splitting that into two lots to go to those two entities. We'll probably talk about that more. We have a meeting, a joint meeting with the city of Bellebrook, Sugar Creek Township, and the Park District on Monday. So we'll probably talk a lot more about that then. That's the update on where we're at with that.
I also wanted to give a quick shout out to Mr. Klein and Mr. Killen. They had the unfortunate incident of having drop off in the middle of the snow squalls. So they were out there, I heard from multiple middle school parents that they were out there with the shovel, and I happened to be dropping off that day, so I saw them out there with shovels and salt, just in action, making sure our students could get in the building safely. So kudos to those two gentlemen.
And frankly, all the parents and everybody, that was a late breaker.
That was a late breaker.
As far as I know, everybody got to school safely that day, and that took work from transportation.
Record snowfall that day.
Parents.
It was a record snowfall.
Crazy town.
Yep.
They were just the ones that I happened to see, and people were like, wow, look at them out there. So thank you.
If they'd come in maybe three hours earlier, it might have been delayed. It was a little too late.
That would have just meant Stephen Bell was in the middle of the snowfall, where it would have been, it would have just shifted the pain, really.
Yeah.
Anything else? All right, at this time, I am making a motion that we move to executive session for the purpose of considering the employment and compensation of a public employee per RC121.22G1. Does my motion have a second?
Second.
I think I heard Dr. Pryor. All right, just so everybody knows, we are not anticipating taking any action whatsoever afterwards, but of course, you're welcome to hang out if you want to. If you need to take off, thanks for being here. Please call the roll.
Dr. Pryor?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dawn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Five yeses.
All right, we're in executive session at 7:33 PM. Thanks, everybody.[1614.65]
All right, we are back out of executive session at 8:51 PM. I am making a motion to adjourn. This is my motion at a second.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Anderson. Who's called the board?
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dawn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Dr. Pride?
Yes.
8:50.
All right, we are adjourned at 8:52 PM. Thanks everyone.